There we go. Believe it or not, we were waiting for you.
I know.
Hello, everybody.
Hello. Mr. Chair.
I'd like to welcome you tonight. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order of business is to approve the agenda?
Let's have roll call first.
Yeah, let's have roll call first.
Chair Hayward.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Tony Spina.
Here.
Eric Sun.
Here.
Robert Dwyer.
Here.
Phil Marshall.
Here. Okay, now for the approval of agenda.
Pretty simple, I see no reason for a change unless some fellow members do. If they don't, I move that we approve it as per it.
I second that.
We have a second by motion by Vice Chair, second by Mr. Sun. And we take a vote on that, too.
Robert Dwyer?
Yes.
Eric Sun?
Yes.
Tony Spina?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hayward?
Yes. All right, next item to get taken care of is that January 11th, 2018 minutes.
Okay, I have one small change.
Yes, Charlie.
Page four of the minutes, about two-thirds of the way down. This is under Chairman Hayward. It says, "So two different systems working in tangent give you the best outcome." I think the word tangent should be tandem. T-A-N-D-E-M.
What page is that again?
Pardon me?
What page?
Page four.
Page four.
That's it.
That would make better sense.
Yeah, that's...
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 11th with the corrections that we just made.
I'll support it.
You can't.
I'll support. Motion to support, roll call.
Robert Dwyer?
Yes.
Eric Sun?
Yes.
Tony Spina?
Yes.
Vice Chair Stan?
Yes.
Yes. Yep, okay, so moving on to the business at hand.
The agenda.
Pardon me?
The rule of agenda.
We did that.
All right, got that done?
Yeah, we did that.
Got the minutes done?
Right.
We're moving on to the...
Okay.
Okay. So case number 18-01. The applicant is William J. Thomas of William J. Thomas Studio. I'm gonna need some help on this last name, but the owners are Byrd and Jennifer...
Corner.
Corner. Thank you. Glad I didn't guess. And the address of the applicant is at 524 Seventh Street, Rochester, Michigan, 48307. The property pertaining is 5262 Wortman Road, Leonard, Michigan, 48367. Parcel number 0502100013. Zoning is agricultural aid. The applicant seeks a variance from the Township of Addison, quote of ordinance is Appendix A. Addison Township zoning ordinance of a 9275 square feet variance for the size of an accessory building from Article 4, Section 4.21.2D. The proposed size of the accessory building is 13,775 square feet. The total area of an individual accessory building shall not exceed the following limitations. It goes on to say what different zoning require so much square footage. But what's pertaining to this is the bottom line here of anything over 435,600 square feet, or basically 10 acres, is limited to a 4,500 square foot building. Okay. I guess we could... I don't have my cheat sheets in front of me, but we're gonna open up a public hearing.
Well, you can have him make his statement first.
Would the applicant wish and care to give a little summary of what they're proposing?
William J. Thomas, William J. Thomas Studios, 524 Seventh Street, Rochester, Michigan, 48307. All right, I apologize first off for the giant bed sheets of drawings that you guys had to receive. We should have put them down for you, but Doug wouldn't have the full-size copies. Guys had any questions on them. What we're looking at doing is, we're a 119-acre parcel, so very large parcel for Addison Township. They didn't get a chance to visit the site up there to see the property. It's a very rolling, hilly site. The home itself was built up on top of a hill overlooking Wortman Road. It's well underway, it should be roofed in in the next couple of weeks, and we're gonna try to have it completed sometime next year. The barn site has been flattened out for those of you who got to go up there and see the large platform that we're proposing to build it on. But one of the biggest hardships we have on that property is that it does roll continuously. So if you drive it to the top of the hill, from there it falls off 50, 60 feet pretty quick behind the house down to a creek bed. And then from there, it's basically all woodland forests that we're trying to maintain and keep. So we're pretty limited on locations to build a structure. The ordinance does limit us at 4,500 square feet. The needs for the client exceed that, and we are allowed to build multiple structures at 4,500 square feet per structure and have a distance of no more than 30 feet between each structure. But that would then push us way back beyond this large drop-off in the back of the property. So it makes it very difficult to try to get the amount of equipment storage in the three buildings. Having combined as one makes everything work. Client does have a car collection and a motorhome to be stored in a portion of the building. The other half of the building would be for the maintenance equipment for the property itself. If you open the drawings up, you can see it's kind of a shape of an L. One section of the L, it's broken off and separated, is a section for the equipment, and the large center section would be for his vehicles. The house has the same character and aesthetics, or the barn will have the same characters and aesthetics that the house has. So we're actually spending quite a bit of money replicating those details onto there. It's not gonna be just a big, ugly metal barn-sized structure, a commercial-type building. It's gonna be a very well-detailed, very nice structure. The elevations that you guys have in the package kind of demonstrate that. Meets every other ordinance as far as distance of property lines, height requirements, everything else. It's just that 4,500 square foot stopgap that we've hit. If you go through Addison Township and other townships around us, there's multiple properties that have structures significantly larger than we're actually proposing to build that are large agricultural facilities on agricultural sites, which basically this is. It's just they were built under either the ag exemption law, or they were built previous to this ordinance being in place. One way or the other has brought us here. So we're asking for favorably upon the project, just basically allowing us to connect that three 4,500 square foot structures into one single structure, being the fact that we're a parcel equal in size to most other large farms that had equal-sized buildings. And on top of the fact that we have a pretty hilly site, trying to get a location for a building that size anywhere on that site in flat ground is a bit of a challenge without putting it up by the road, the only flat spot, which we couldn't do anyway. So it's the general synopsis of the project. Happy to answer any questions you guys have.
What did you bring?
Same thing you got, just smaller scale. Just wanted to open this up to them. Just so I can point stuff out as you guys ask questions. If you do look at the grades on the back of the structure, here's the building, that kind of the L-shaped structure. The grades do fall off tremendously behind there. Again, if anybody got the chance to walk up on the site, if you guys get a chance between now and our next hearing to actually go up there and look at it, walk to the back of that, it just drops right straight off the back end. So there's no way that structure could go any further back. And we're trying to maintain that woodland area that we have tucked in behind there and not going wrecking, tearing down a whole bunch of trees, trying to build roads and things like that. Just walking through the drawings really quick, four plan-wise. Okay, so it's got large center section, basically is for his vehicles, motorhomes and cars. The side section over here, the section is dedicated to the equipment for the property, lawn mowers and other pieces of equipment that he has to store in there, and the aesthetics of the barn itself, again, matching the character of the house. The house itself is, the goal is to have a very rustic cabin-esque type structure, so it's got a lot of... It's gonna look like exposed or heavy timber log siding on it, big timber brackets. So that same log siding actually appears on the lower story of the structure, along with big stone details and carriage-style doors, metal roof, so it's first-class in every way.
Very nice. Do you have an overall height?
Overall height of the structure? It's at 38 feet to the ridge.
Thank you.
Including the coupolets, how tall are the coupolets?
The coupolets are another six feet on top of that. Oh, they got deleted? Okay. Deleted.
On the barn.
On the barn, not on the house.
I didn't get a chance to lock it.
Okay.
And just, you know, decide where the barn's gonna be. Was that fill?
It was cut, actually, mostly cut.
It was cut?
We cut it down, it was, like I said, a big rolling knob, we cut it...
Cut or filled, yeah, something looked like.
Right, we cut as much as we could to balance it out, to try to get that to work. But yeah, it's been an ongoing challenge with all of us being the excavator, the surveyor.
So the rear, the rear boundary of the barn is pretty close to that?
It's actually off the edge. We're pouring big concrete retaining wall down that whole back wall and supporting that back section of the barn.
That's gonna, yeah, it's gonna be quite a challenge.
It is, it's been a challenge from day one trying to get that to work out, so...
Okay, one small detail.
Sure.
You said it's a 112-acre parcel. Some of the papers say 90 acres, some say 75.
It's multiple parcels together, yeah, it's like, we apologize on that.
It's one parcel we're talking about.
It's one single, yeah, this parcel, parcel B, and I forget how we actually had it phrased. It's actually why we weren't on the January hearing, because there were some discrepancies between my application and what the city had on record. But, um, but yes.
But for this parcel, dash 13?
Yes, 13, I think that one's 75, and there's other parcels that are tucked in behind it. Byrd speaks to that more so than I can. The parcels and the size of them, the total parcel that you own?
Well, no, no, not what he owns, this one parcel.
This one parcel.
What acreage is this one parcel?
It was, I believe, 119 is what this total...
Our says 90, right?
I know, that was the total.
Is it 90? Okay, so it's 90, that's what it was now.
But it was split.
90 was the one parcel we had.
Right, so 90 is that parcel for that barn.
Okay, 90, okay, thank you.
I apologize, yeah, it's like I said, there's been, as we went through the property split, there was a residence that we split off. That's another section of it, and there's other parcels that are associated with the property.
And you're building another residence on this property?
Correct, we were building new residence on this property.
And the same builder's gonna build both?
Yes, yep, that's our one right there.
Okay. But he's not gonna do any farming, this is not a farm building?
Well, there'll be horse, maintain horses on the property.
Well, yeah.
Other animals.
Okay, but not farming?
Not farming, per se.
Per se, okay.
Not full-on ag, no, the goal is actually to maintain as much of that woodland property as we can.
Okay.
So a lot of the equipment that we have on the property would be maintaining the roads and stuff going through there, the small trails, but not actually farming it.
There were two letters in the packet that we received from immediate neighbors.
Yes.
Which were, you know, are they here tonight, if I had a chance?
No.
Not the neighbors?
Nope.
We're neighbors, but...
Which ones?
We're the Wilandos, we're the ones that are Rochester Road and Precincts property, buttered our property in the back.
Oh, in the back? Oh, okay. I think you're off the right track.
I was just wondering if they're here, because I know Chair's gonna call for a public hearing.
Sure.
And that, we're gonna be a chance to...
Those two are the, it's the neighbor to the north of me and the neighbor to the west of me, the two letters.
I don't have any other questions.
All right. Anybody else?
Open your public hearing.
Mr. Thomas, real quick, do you, is there any living area in that structure?
There is no living area, there's a small bathroom and like a little seating bar area, just to hang out with. But no actual bedroom space, living space at all in there.
But a bathroom that'll probably require a separate field, so...
Yeah, it's actually gonna be tied into the main field, correct. If you write down in this little corner right here, so we've got a small, big bar area out in the main space, and then there's a bathroom here, a mechanical room. Center is going up to the mezzanine level.
And the building primarily is, sounds like it's used for storage and harbor tractors and so forth.
Tractors and vehicles, correct.
Okay.
It's not a livestock barn.
I guess at this point, any other questions from board members?
Well, only one that has to do with the overall height. Since it's not a farm-related building. One of the paragraphs in the ordinance says that in ag zoning, the maximum height of an accessory building can only be 20 feet.
That's the midpoint of the roof, and we're basically, I think we're below that, so...
So you're at 38 feet.
That's the ridge.
Yeah. I understand, you don't measure to the ridge, but...
Right.
You think the midpoint of that height is 20 feet or less?
It's a very low, long pitch. The, and I don't know if that's, I think there's some caveat to that, or Doug went through that with me and made sure that we completed it, we did not have an order for it.
Okay, so that's not a surprise to anybody.
Yeah, no, no, not at all, he verified that. I think as you step it further away from the property line, that increases by a certain amount of feet as you go up, and we met all those requirements.
Okay, I'm not aware of that, but Doug's happy, we're happy.
Yep, yeah, Doug was very happy with that.
From what I know, Tony, it's taking the eve, the bottom of the eve line, the top of the ridge...
Halfway, yeah.
Halfway point, and at that point down to the ground is your overall building height.
Right.
Okay.
Correct. But yes, he did verify that with me, made sure we had no other issues.
Good, good. So no heavy equipment to be stored in the barn, just regular personal use, mowers?
Heavy equipment.
Tractors, farm tractors and utility tractors and...
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, well, if there's any others, no other questions, like to open up the public hearing at 6:18. Public, like to speak? Please, uh...
We're not.
We're on the podium. If you please stand and just state your name.
Sure.
Ron Adore, Wilandos. We have a parcel property that, but there's, we have absolutely no objections.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this?
Yeah, you guys can talk too, I mean, you're public.
No, the idea is to have the diamond stored inside the barn, remember, one of the classic cars for weather reasons?
Right.
For them out there today.
Yeah.
And also from the standpoint of me tractors and so forth, I like to keep my stuff inside, not out in the weather. I think it looks better from the standpoint of the area, and it's better for my equipment.
Good.
So that's really the reason I have a similar size barn space right now, up here and up here. That's why it kind of based...
Right, you know what you need.
And that's where we're at.
Okay.
Not hearing anything else from the public? Like to close the public hearing? 6:20. I'm not sure, but just reiterate, if you're aware or not, we hear and discover the first meeting, all the data and information. Sometimes we even have other information come in during, but this deliberation and the final verdict will be on the second meeting, so next month. We'll deliberate and give you a verdict at that point.
Let's say the date for the next meeting would be March, it would be March the 15th?
March 8th. March 8th.
The 2nd?
2nd Thursday.
So March 8th, 6 o'clock, the next meeting, thank you. Thanks, Eric.
Okay, speaking for myself, it's my practice to not go see a property until after the public hearing. So I will go between now and the next meeting. Do you want me to call ahead of time, anybody, or just?
Call me.
Just go out, if you have a business card or phone number or something, please.
We'd be happy to meet you up there if you'd like us to walk you through the property.
Fine, yeah, either way.
Just don't pick a muddy day.
You know what, I wouldn't mind a muddy day compared to seven degrees.
Speaking of muddy days, I'll ask for forgiveness, because I did go out, just so I have some idea. I drove up and you guys were busy putting the big lumberies up on the house. And yeah, it was muddy.
Yeah, that disturbed Phil, or not Phil, but cut on the top, it could soot be really quick.
Yeah. I might go out again, so we can, we can do that?
Yep, yep.
Make sure we...
Okay.
I did mention in one of the clues...
Yeah.
What's the next one?
Yeah, no problem.
Here's a great big thing. And three or four, which one?
Yeah, I think we're going with three.
Right there's a...
Did you want to give us that?
Yeah, I'll give it to you. You want me to just say it out loud, I don't have a card on me?
Uh, kind of.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't know, you said cheat sheet.
All right, yeah.
There you go. That's no problem.
I'm sorry, I missed it, we're gonna get your number then?
After the meeting, yeah, once the cameras...
Very good. Okay. I think we're ready to move on to the next item. We have a ZB bylaw amendment for page two, strike out, delete the text in blue font, inserted proposed text.
Yeah.
Did everybody get that? And I'll just read this out loud, so it's public information and we should. What this is referring to is the meetings, and in Section 2 Meetings, meetings of the zoning board of appeals shall be held on a second Thursday of each month, or as noted below. All meetings shall take place at the Addison Township complex at 7:30. This is what is struck out, and now for obvious reasons, we're changing it. Or has been, has been, at 6 o'clock, second Thursday. But the new capture should read, all ZBA meetings shall be held at the Addison Township offices by March 1st of the current calendar year. The meeting day and time will be established by ZBA action. If ZBA takes no action, the meeting day and time shall remain the same as previous year. So right now, we're just, we're simply back, we're still at second Thursday, 6 o'clock. Which is sometimes fun to make.
Well, it's a challenge, that's good for you. Where'd we miss the boat on that? Didn't we take care of that? Why doesn't that have to be changed? I thought we thrashed that out.
Well, I, maybe, I think this is the bylaws.
Yeah.
Oh, the bylaw.
They say 7:30.
We established what we were gonna do, now we gotta change the bylaws. I get it.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, 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 we did it here, but we didn't change the bylaws, all right.
Do we need to approve the bylaws?
I think we need to approve the change.
Yeah, yeah, make a motion to do it.
Isn't there another change at the bottom of the page? I'm gonna make sure, under F number 7B?
Yeah, there was.
I don't know what the significance of that is, but...
Well, there is something there.
Reports, they changed one word.
Yeah, it used to, it used to read zoning board of appeals matters miscellaneous, now just zoning board of appeals reports. If I can have a motion to, I think what I want to do is make a motion to, or have a motion to approve the ZBA bylaw amendments. And if you vote on it?
I'd make that amend, that motion?
I'd support it.
These two changes?
Okay, motion by Tony, supported by Lawrence. And if we can get a roll call vote?
Robert Dwyer?
Yes.
Eric Sun?
Yes.
Tony Spina?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hayward?
Yep, yes. Okay, so that part's done. Moving on, meeting dates for the fiscal year, the second Thursday of the month, at 6 o'clock. Okay, and other businesses correspondence received. I don't believe there is any...
I don't have any.
That, um...
I have nothing.
I have...
But, Robert, I do know you have to take a roll call on the meeting dates, because it's on the agenda.
All right, I make a motion to accept, I turn to item four, meeting dates for fiscal year, meeting this year, 2018, the second Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM.
I'll support that. Okay, we have a motion to support.
All in favor?
Take roll call again.
Yeah, all in favor.
Robert Dwyer?
Yes.
Eric Sun?
Yes.
Tony Spina?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hayward?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Lisa, yes, we made the motion to accept the amendments of the bylaw dates and the ZBA meetings and so forth, but not, you're right, not the meeting time and date. Okay, so I think we don't have any correspondence to talk about. Zoning board reports, well, we had a basic training last week that was okay, it was pretty good.
At Oakdale County, yeah?
At Oakdale County. It was good for refreshing and just kind of reiterating, backed up some things that I was tossing around, so...
So in 10 words or less, what do we need to know that you learned?
I don't think you need to know anything, I think we know everything. But...
Let me give it a go, follow the rules.
Go ahead.
Follow the rules.
Oh, okay.
Just follow the rules.
Yeah, basically follow the rules, make sure that the applicant and the public have fair and equal opportunity to express their opinions and statements and so forth, and, you know, everything else was pretty much what we're... We're not doing a bad job, is what I, from what I comparing, comparing other townships and things like that. Not that everybody else is doing any worse, but...
Did they express what Mr. Davis has always tried to make known to us, that get it on the record, speak up and make it part of the record?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Did they did that at the meeting?
Rule number one, everything has to be on the record.
Very good, all right.
Yeah, and that goes back to my, everybody has equal opportunity and share all the information, get it all out there.
Say it out loud, don't whisper between yourselves.
Okay.
Basic stuff.
Very good.
You know, and they just reiterated that the public hearing is a public hearing, and that's where the information is absorbed and recorded. And the information that comes after the public hearing is closed is correspondence. It's taken in consideration, but it's not part of the record.
It's pertinent, but not part of the record, that's great.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, other than that...
Because over the years, that's one of the things that we've always tried to recommend. We've got a couple new board members, and I think you guys understand that, but it's always, doesn't hurt to remind us of it. Yep.
Okay, moving on, report from our planning commission liaison.
Planning commission is kind of status quo right now, we've handled what we need to handle, and we have no... We do not have a meeting this month, so we're just pending something that might come up, so we're all status quo.
I guess we're gonna open this up to the public forum now. And if any of the public would like to speak, they can...
Speak about anything.
Last chance, before the storm. You better hurry before the storm hits. Storming for 2018.
They've already called, that's for schools.
They called Rochester, yeah.
A few inches.
Five to nine is what I heard, but, you know.
Like to make, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, or?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
And I think what we did, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You can't make a motion.
You can't do it, forget that.
I can't make the motion, I can ask for a motion. I can't make the motion, I can ask for a motion, and then as well, you, you as the members can't adjourn the, the meeting.
Unless we take a vote.
Unless we take a vote.
Yeah, but, yeah.
It's a first, second, and then a vote.
Right. I'll support his motion. There we go.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark.